And commission to order. She, uh, Kayla?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to read my script.
Uh, so let's stand for the, uh, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kayla.
Connor?
Present.
Present.
Caddich?
Here.
Mocha is absent. Sanchez Garcia?
Here.
Borward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we have any subsequent need items?
We do not, and then just for the record, our city manager, Chris Home, will be joining the meeting via Teams.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion for approval of the agenda as posted or as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Caddich?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have the minutes of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Everybody's read over the minutes, I take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Connor?
Yes.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Caddich?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have no petitions or communications that we have stated for agenda. So we'll move into the public hearings. Um, item number two, public hearings, is a public hearing to meet, to make a consistency determination that the proposed five-year capital improvement program per fiscal years of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine, thirty conforms to the goals and policies of the city's general plan as required by the California Government Code, section six-five-one-zero-three-C. Um, I'll open this to, uh, Mr. Home.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a brief presentation, um, ver- verbal presentation tonight. So the capital improvement plan, it acts as a major policy document similar to, um, the city's annual budget. It's a five-year plan, and it outlines the vision for the short and long-range development, maintenance, improvement, and construction of new infrastructure assets. Uh, this could include water, sewer, um, stormwater, and, um, and other types of infrastructure. Uh, roads as well, so the plan is updated annually, and the idea is to have the planning commission review this to ensure conformity with the general, the city's general plan. So in your packet, there's, um, staff report as well as the capital improvement program. Um, it shows fiscal years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six through fiscal year twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. And it outlines the different funds, um, in the description column of, of the different things that we'd be, um, paying for, for out of these funds, whether it's a pedestrian improvement project in the downtown, um, or various other projects. Um, so this is in your packet, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Home? Okay, then I will turn this over to the public hearing portion and open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on this can do so at this point. No one wants to comment, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. So I'd like to get a motion, uh, to make a determination that the proposed five-year capital improvement program conforms to the goals and policies of the city's general plan as required by California Government Code, sections six-five-one-zero-three-C.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Caddich?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number three, public hearing to make an environmental finding that the project is categorically exempt under California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and recommending the city council adopt an ordinance approving an amendment to the development agreement by and between the city of Atwater and the Ferrari Ranch owners to clarify the responsible parties for the construction of water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure for the development located at APNs zero-zero-five, one-two-zero, zero-four-five, and zero-zero-five, one-two-zero, zero-four-six. Mr. Home?
Uh, yes, thank you. Staff, uh, we're recommending, as staff, we're recommending, uh, that the planning commission actually, uh, continue this item to the, the June, the regular planning commission meeting, um, in June. And, um, the reason for that is, um, there's a small correction we need to make to, uh, the items in the packet. So, um, this is not going to, um, hold up any projects or development. There's nothing looming in the distance. Um, this is, this, uh, this item is actually driven, um, by the city. We're hoping to clean things up so that we can prepare for future development, whenever that happens in this area. So again, this, this is, uh, this delay is not detrimental, we're just wanting to make sure we do this right. And, um, so we'd, we'd like to ask if the commission, if the planning commission would please, um, continue this item to the regular meeting in June.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the commissioners? Okay, I will open up the public hearing for this portion. Having no one coming up to speak to this item, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll take a motion making a finding that the project is, I'm sorry. Um, I will take a motion for the continuance of this item until next month's June meeting. I don't have a specific date on that, do you, Kayla?
It'll be June eighteenth.
It's a June eighteenth.
So motioned.
Second.
Caddich?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Motion to continue this item to the Ju- June eighteenth Planning Commission meeting, passes.
Item number four, public hearing to consider adopting a resolution recommending city council adopt a zoning ordinance text amendment amending chapter seventeen-point-six-three parking requirements of the Atwater Municipal Code to modernize the parking ordinance and to make it similar to the parking ordinance of the city of Merced. Mr. Home?
Yes, thank you. Um, as I reviewed, uh, parts of the municipal code, the parking ordinance, uh, was an important, uh, piece to look at. Um, it's an older piece of our code, and it, it looks like it needed to be updated. Um, as I looked around at different, uh, options for how to do this update, I found that the city of Merced has very comprehensive and modern, uh, parking ordinance. Um, it has more examples and different types of, of land uses that it, um, defines and, and, um, and explains what the parking requirements would be. Um, it takes out a lot of the guesswork that we currently have. Um, it also is, um, it's just, it's just more comprehensive and modern. It's, it's, it, it has things like shared parking, um, talks a little bit about landscaping and bikes and stuff. So, um, instead of making small tweaks to our parking ordinance, I, I found that the easiest thing to do would be to, um, remove our existing parking ordinance and replace it with, um, a tweaked version of the city of Merced. There's a few things in here that, um, uh, were changed to match the Atwater style, um, for lack of a better word. Uh, for example, um, the Merced parking ordinance, it only requires one parking space for single-family residences. Um, in Atwater, we, we typically require two, um, unless there are certain circumstances for the lot. And, um, I put those, I put those into, um, this update so that we're maintaining the, the same number of parking spaces for single-family, uh, residences. Um, I also clarified a couple of things that we have to do, um, with regard to, um, state law when it, when it comes to, um, accessory dwelling units and, and multifamily, uh, parking, um, since the state has, has carved out a couple, um, exceptions. For example, if you're, if you're developing near, um, a bus stop and, and that sort of thing, um, then you get, you get some exemptions. Um, so we followed all of those state rules. Um, but on the whole, ninety-five or, or more percent of what is in the, um, city of Merced's parking ordinance is, um, is good for us, I think. Um, and it would be my recommendation that we, um, we take that and, and make this, uh, our ordinance with the, with the changes that are in this, uh, edited version. Um, so that's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Home? If not, then I'll open the public hearing portion of this. No one coming forward to speak to this item, I will close the public hearing portion and ask for a motion to make a finding that the zoning ordinance text amendment is categorically exempt under California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, guideline section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three. Review for exemption and adopt resolution number zero-two-seven-zero-dash-two-five recommending city councils to adopt a zoning ordinance text amendment amending chapter seventeen-point-six-three parking requirements of the Atwater Municipal Code.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Caddich?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, public hearing to consider adopting a resolution recommending city council adopt a zoning ordinance text amendment amending section seventeen-point-seven-one-point-zero-eight-five expiration of a permit of chapter seventeen-point-seven-one, conditional use permit of the Atwater Municipal Code to change the expiration limits for conditional use permits. Mr. Home?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, uh, I need to clarify one thing, which is that, um, as I noticed this, uh, um, particular item, it was, uh, specific to, um, a very specific section of this chapter. Um, and as, uh, uh, you know, once we got this notice out, um, reviewing this, um, in detail, there were some changes throughout the whole chapter for, um, conditional use permits that I found necessary to, um, clarify things and, and bring the, the language of the code, um, up to a modern, fresh take. So I made those changes, uh, in anticipation of, um, doing, uh, the, well, talking with you all and, um, and hearing from the public, um, if there are any comments, but also, um, doing, um, the follow-up, the public noticing, um, the ones we go to the city council. And, um, of course, they'll have, um, a first reading, and then they'll have a second reading and a second meeting. So they'll have two meetings to discuss this item. Um, and with all that, uh, public, um, the opportunity for public comment and, and everything like that, I think that, that, um, that, that basically resolves that. So, um, I want to point out the main, uh, change here is, uh, currently in the city of Atwater, um, if an applicant gets a, a conditional use permit, um, that permit expires after six months. Um, and, um, looking at that and many examples of, of times that, uh, those have expired, and caused, um, uh, delays in development and also having to come back and, um, and seek new applications unnecessarily, really? I mean, if, it's, it's a avoid, it's, you know, it's an avoidable, um, error, I think. Um, so having a six-month, uh, expiration is very short, um, given the different things that can come up, such as, uh, needing to get financing with, from a bank, or if you have a, um, you know, something happened with your family and you need to take care of them and, um, set aside your, your plans for development. Um, even if you're just going through the building permit process, um, things take time, and, um, we try our best to streamline things and, and make it easy, but, um, you know, life happens. So, uh, I think that having a, a longer period for, you know, before conditional use permits expire would be a very, um, beneficial thing for businesses. Um, so I've, again, looked to the city of Merced. Um, I, I haven't worked at the city of Merced before, so, and I don't own stocks in the city of Merced. I'm just, just to be clear on that. But I think that, um, following them, um, is important because they are, um, the, our nearest, um, city neighbor, and they have a larger population than us. Um, so obviously, they have some good resources. Um, they, they've been able to update their code in many ways over the years, um, to keep things up to date. And, um, I think that they, they have good examples. And their example for the timeframe for, um, for these conditional use permits to expire is in a timeframe of five years. Um, so five years is, is, uh, much longer than six months, um, but I do think it's, uh, reasonable in this context because, um, well, at least from anecdotal evidence, um, having been in a city, um, most, uh, you know, previously to this, um, where I, I previously worked, um, it had, uh, a timeframe that was in between. It was just, um, that sometimes use permits would still expire, and, um, you always wished and felt like if there was just a little bit more time, um, it could smooth things over and make, um, development happen without, um, having costly, uh, do-overs. So, uh, that's my recommendation, however, um, if the council would like to discuss, um, and we could look at any part of this, uh, there, I call it a redline version. Um, the underlined portions are addition, uh, additional words, uh, or punctuation, and the strikeouts are obviously, uh, parts that are proposed to be removed. Um, so if there's anything in here that you'd like to, uh, look at, and if there's, uh, obviously any comments from the public, I'm happy to go over anything and, and answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners have anything for Mr. Home, or any comments?
I do, I have a question in regards to the city prior that you mentioned. What was that timeline?
I believe it was two years, and again, it always felt, even though it's kind of in between, it always felt like this, this wish, this wanting, that if, if it could only be longer, because when those things expire, everyone's just kind of, let, there's this feeling of empty-handedness that you have to, you know, you have to kickstart everything back up and pay the fees again, have all the review, um, you know, spend months going through the environmental, um, going, going back to public hearings. Um, and I, I witnessed it firsthand, and, um, it's a lot to do for, for, uh, for developers and for staff. And, and many times, you have the same outcome.
Thank you. I would, um, be glad to hear also other thoughts. I, I think six months is a short timeframe, I do agree with that. I, uh, part of me feels like five years is a long time because there's a lot of things that can potentially influence or change. I just think that's a long time, so I, that's why I was wondering about the other timeframe. I do appreciate the information that the city of Merced has, um, that timeline, I appreciate that information for consideration, but be interested to hear other thoughts on that as well.
Um, just off the top of my head, I think that in terms of Merced being our competition for subdivisions going in, things like that, right? When these developers are looking and deciding where they're going to build, I think that if we are, we do not want to be less attractive to those projects. So I think by extending it to five years, we're now competitive, right? And I think that that's always been one of Atwater's bigger problems.
Now, I would comment also that, um, the five years is kind of a maximum that would be needed, say, on a very large project, as they go through that. Most of our smaller projects that we would have, um, whether it's just kind of mom and pop or smaller businesses, wouldn't be required utilizing a five-year timeframe. So, so it's, it's not that they're all going to use five years' worth of timeframe on a conditional use permit. Medium are ready to get the business and want to, want to get the business going. So, so I think, but if you have, like, uh, like Mr. Connor said, a subdivision, or you have, you know, a large facility of some sort, you know, with all the details and financing and everything else in there, you know, you, you may need to have that, shopping center or something like that, could, could definitely be that. And it kind of keeps us, you know, competitive. It also, I think, is enticement for developers that want to come in, to actually go ahead and get their conditional use permit and then begin to actually move their projects forward, um, which we really want to do, whatever we can to help entice those developers that want to come to the community and make it as easy as possible for them, so.
So I, I, and I would weigh in, and I, I agree, um, that some of these larger developments need more time. Um, so, Mr. Home, I have a question for you on that regard. It, would this be retroactive? And we've approved several large developments, consider a hotel, several property develop, you know, residential developments, et cetera. Um, would this be retroactive to those that are already, that have already been approved?
Only to the extent that this, uh, new five-year timeframe would reach. It wouldn't go back to eternity. It would only go to, like, the five-year mark. So if, if, for example, and I don't have any, I don't have any examples, I don't have anyone in mind, uh, with this change, there's no, uh, use permit that's floating out there that has expired that, um, well, this may be actually a, a good question for the city attorney. So, if you like, I can bring this specific question, because I, 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 I'm not a hundred percent sure. I will bring this specific question when I bring this to the city council, and I will bring your recommendation for how it should be resolved. So, do you want this to, uh, apply retroactively? Or do you want it to only apply to new projects? Because if it only applies to new projects, I probably need to reword a little bit, which is fine. I can do that when I bring this to the city council, because they'll have to re- review this anyway. And we could add language that says, start, only starting with projects, um, um, that, you know, as of the effective date of this ordinance or something like that. I could work with the city attorney on that.
And I, yeah, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, just for, to continue that, that question, yeah, I don't have a, I would, I would rather have it be retroactive, and we've, we've approved in the time that I've been here, I think it's my third year or something like that, we've approved some, uh, larger-scale projects that don't seem to have gotten any traction yet, um, for whatever reasons. Again, you know, uh, all the development things that happen, like, that happens in that lifespan, so, um, I, I like what you said, it, it wouldn't go, uh, backward in perpetuity, but, uh, five years would be, I think that would be a, a good thing in my mind.
I would, I, I was just thinking of a project, we have the, the hotel project over there on Bell. When it was approved, if it's approved with a conditional use permit that would expire within six months, that project's going to take time to get off the ground. So is there a way to, to, you know, when that comes up for review on the conditional use permit extension, move them into more of a five-year conditional use permit? Um, you know, at the discretion of, you know, the, the planning department or city council or whoever needs to really approve those?
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if your microphone is on, uh, it's a little bit harder for me to hear when you're talking.
So basically, what Don Borward is saying is that the hotel project, which was approved in twenty twenty-three, obviously, it's a larger project and it would take some time to get up and running. Um, so he's thinking that this would be able to apply to them as well. Now, I just have a question for all of you guys, because the expiration of the conditional use permit is one of their conditions of approval, so if you're making this retroactive, are you able to change what was already an approved condition of approval? And at the same time, you guys did also have, uh, each applicant has the right to do a time extension request if they want to continue their project and if they need it, and they don't meet those timelines.
Um, uh, these are all really great questions, Kayla. Um, and, um, I think as we move forward, um, and we take the recommendation of the planning commission to the city council, um, we'll be able to have the city attorney, um, uh, brief the council based on, um, I'm, I'm hearing from the planning commission that you'd like it to be retroactive up to the point that this five-year mark goes. And actually, you know, I, I think this is, this is probably a good thing, too, because there, there may be some recent projects that, um, would definitely be, um, worthy of keeping alive, um, that hotel, for example.
So, so could we word it in a way, as you advise the city council, any current open conditional use just rolls into a five-year? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I think we could, I think we could figure that out. I think, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll work with the city attorney to make sure that, um, those wrinkles get ironed out.
And, and yes, I have, I had the same clarification question, because I, as I'm hearing, I, it sounds to me like we would look back more than just currently open, because those would be within the last six months, right? And so we would be looking far beyond that to those that have expired, they have not asked for an extension.
Maybe like Chelsea.
So those are the, that's a clarification question I have. Uh, my initial thought was we would look at doing this moving forward, so it's everything that comes in, the current open, if they ask for an extension, that would then apply to the, let's say, five-year, if that's what we, um, approve. So that, that was my thought. So I, I, yeah, I would like the clarification as well.
I think this might be a bit of language that would, could be reviewed and determined by city council, who this is going to be really in, in their field of what they, they determine they want to see, so. I, I think we can, in, in motion, approve the motion and send it forward to city council, and then they can, they can determine how they want to go retro with that. You know, especially giving Mr. Home time to talk to legal and anybody else that needs to talk about what the best way to implement this is.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, yeah, absolutely. Um, however, the, the planning commission would like to, uh, make their motion, that provides direction for how your recommendation flows to the city council. So if you'd like your recommendation to be X, then that's what we'll, we'll share with the council. And if you'd like it to be Y, then that's what we'll share with the council. So that, that does need to be part of the motion, but before, before we get to a motion, if anyone's, um, getting, um, ready to, to make one, I, I also want to point out a different part of this, um, update, which, um, we hadn't talked about yet. But, um, it's, it's part of the findings for approval. So most cities have, when, when, when the planning commission sits and you're reviewing, uh, a, a conditional use permit, in most cities, there's a list of a handful of different things that are called findings. The findings that you must make in order to approve a project. And the city of Atwater didn't have a clear list before. It had a paragraph, it had, currently, currently has a paragraph, and it's in seventeen-dot-seven-one-dot-zero-four-zero. And it's called planning commission action right now. So this would change to, the header would be called findings for approval, and the whole paragraph gets replaced, because it makes sense to match many other cities, most other cities, where they have a list of findings. And this is a, this is a new thing for Atwater, but I think it standardizes us with the rest of the other cities, and it really clarifies your power, uh, to influence whether a project is, uh, approved or not based on the findings that you need to make. So the way it reads, and I, I'd love to just read it, it's just, um, it's got a header, uh, sentence, and then it has four, uh, findings, and if you don't mind, I'll read them to you. If you don't mind, Chair.
No, that, that's fine, we're actually, you can edit on the screen at the same time.
So the header says, "The planning commission may approve the issuance of a conditional use permit", and then in parentheses, it says, "Or recommend action by the city council if the proposal includes changes that require council approval." It closes parentheses. "Only if all of the following findings can be made." So you, the, the, the commission needs to make all of the four findings. The first one is, "The proposed use is consistent with the purpose and standards of the zoning district, the general plan, and any adopted area or neighborhood plan, specific plan, or community plan." Now, we don't necessarily have all those different types of things. We have, we do have a general plan, we have a zoning, we have zones and stuff. But I want to make this broad enough that we hopefully never have to change it again, because some, some cities, they like to have neighborhood plans and different types of things. So I'm not trying to create stuff out of thin air, I'm just trying to be inclusive. So first of all, So first of all, the proposed use, it has to follow the zone and it has to follow the general plan. That's the gist of that first finding. The second finding is, "The location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed use will be compatible with the existing and future land uses in the vicinity of the subject property." So obviously, you want it to be, you want it to fit in, right? You don't, you you don't want um um necessarily to have an uh something that creates nuisances right next to some homes. So the size of it, the design of it matters sometimes, not all the time. Sometimes it's it's slam dunk and it's like, okay, we got, we got this. But sometimes it matters, so you want to make sure that those are covered. Um, the third item is, "The proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the city." That's very standard language. And the fourth one is, "The proposed use is properly located within the city and adequately served by existing or planned services and infrastructure." I mean, obviously, if we have like uh something that you know is going to have a lot of traffic, but it's built on like a gravel road, there's a problem there, right? So we want to make sure that the services are met. Um, and you want to make sure that the sewer line is adequate, that, you know, we're not overflowing the sewer by creating like a high school somewhere, just coming up with some random examples, but you you get where I'm going. So those are the four, um, and um, I I welcome any feedback on that. I just wanted to bring it up, thank you.
Thank you, I think that's um, that's very helpful, so. Is there any more comments for Mr. Home?
I like it.
Okay. All right, so I will open the public hearing for this item. Not having anybody come forward, I'll close the public hearing for this and bring it back. Uh, looking for a motion to make a finding that the zoning ordinance text amendment is categorically exempt under California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, Guideline Section 15061B3, and Adopt Resolution Number 0271-25, recommending city council to adopt a zoning ordinance text amendment amended Chapter seventeen point seven one conditional use permit of the Atwater Municipal Code.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Uh, do you mind before the vote if I could clarify the motion?
Sure.
Um, sorry if I missed this, um, I I may have missed it. Did you, did you put in your motion whether or not you wanted it to be retroactive?
No, we we did not, is that part of the motion that would help you out?
Well, since it was, since it was part of the discussion, I was curious if the, if the, you don't have to, you don't have to clarify this, but you can. If you want, if you'd want your recommendation to include some direction to staff or to the city council, rather, um, then you're, that's that's your, within your purview.
Mr. Connor, would you?
With that motion, I would like to advise that this become retroactive to any open conditional use permit, basically automatically extending their six-month permit or wherever they're at in that process, in that timeline, to five years. Does that seem, does anybody want to?
I'll second that motion, if if Mr. Home's good with that.
Just to clarify, you guys are looking to only retroactive open ones or ones that have previously expired as well?
I would add, I would add to that, that we would advise that if legally possible, we could go back twenty-four months to any projects that we're trying to resurrect to help produce growth for the city and extend that to those projects.
So.
Thirty-six, thirty-six months, three years?
So just, just to help you guys a little bit, if you guys wanted it to be retroactive to any projects that fall within that five-year timeline from the day that they were approved, that could be your guys' motion, so you're not limiting it only to two years back.
There we go.
Three years back, it's anything that falls within that five-year timeline.
That's very clean.
Okay, so.
I just have a question with us, but I, do I have to wait till the motions are done?
Yes.
Okay.
So could you, just before we do a second on that, Kayla, just reiterate that that motion?
I I could re, I could restate.
Okay.
The motion, if you guys would like.
Yeah, I want to make sure we get clarification for what the motion is before we actually do a second, and then we'll call for comment.
I would like to make a motion to approve this, along with retroactively extending this to any conditional use permit that was within the last five years.
Okay.
So now I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any comment?
Thank you, just a, I I guess just a question, so that means staff will be going through five years worth of conditional use permit issuances and contacting each of those that have, that aren't, weren't moved forward upon. I don't know if that's the right way to say it. I just want to make sure I understand that's what's gonna happen.
Kayla's making.
Chair, Chair, if I may. Um, so Kayla could probably correct me on this, but I would guess that there's only been maybe more than a handful in the last um five years. I mean, again, I could be, I could be off, but there's not, it it's not an insurmountable task. Um, but but it is something that we can uh look at. And and, you know, we'll have time to review this before we take this to the city council, so we have a better idea.
Thank you for the information. I I I was wondering what that could potentially look like in terms of, uh, you know, the the time. Thank you.
We have no more comments, and Kayla, could you call for the vote, please?
Roll call vote to approve the motion, including the motion being retroactive to any conditional use permits that were approved in the last five years. Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Caddage?
Yes.
Borbort?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Home, the next item up is city manager verbal updates.
Yeah, I just want to thank the planning commission um for your wise questions and getting us to where we got tonight. Um, I know it's uh, some of this stuff is a little tricky, um, but uh, you're, you you're giving us good questions. I really appreciate the engagement. And uh, I I hope to have good news about um upbringing on board, uh, Community Development Director. Um, I'm very close, we're we're so very close, in fact, we're we're in background, we're that close, so. I'm thinking um either June or or July, um, we'll we'll be able, you'll you'll see a new face.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for bearing with me um over these last um few months. I know we've canceled a couple of meetings, but um I really appreciated um getting to know you uh better. You know, I I I didn't really come to the planning commission meetings much, maybe the first one um last year, um, after I was appointed, but it's been great, um, brings me back to my roots, and um I really enjoyed it. So thank you for for the time that we've shared together.
This has actually been our first real dance this evening, so. So comments from the public, uh, notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however is not required. Action will not be taken on any item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Seems we have no comments, we'll move on to Commissioner Matters. Mr. Connor?
I'm excited that we're, we've implemented some stuff that will make development of the city easier and hopefully more attractive. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez Garcia?
No comments tonight, but I do want to wish everyone a good Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haddad?
So, yeah, so agree with Mr. Connor that the things that we discussed, moving things forward, is exciting to me, especially with where the Ferrari project is concerned. It's uh, makes my heart feel good that that's been revisited and that we're gonna get that thing rolling again. I think there's a lot of um wonderful upward possibilities for that development in growing Atwater in a positive manner. Um, and then again echoing what Mrs. Sanchez Garcia said, did I say that right? About having a wonderful Memorial Day weekend, hope everybody's safe and uh uh remember those veterans that gave it all for our freedom, thank you.
I just wanted to comment on um the fact that we look like we're making progress moving forward. We're revisiting some of the uh items that we needed to revisit. I know the parking requirement plan was last done nineteen seventy-nine with a couple of revisions, so um, things have changed dramatically since nineteen seventy-nine. I want to thank Mr. Home for um actually working with us this evening, interacting with us as we kind of work out the best results for this plan and being open to um just sharing, you know, his vision as we kind of shared what we saw in that plan also. So um, just want to thank everybody for being a part of that also. If there's no other comments, then I will call this meeting adjourned. Kayla?